Good evening and welcome to the Monthly Board of Education Meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
It is my pleasure to call the Board of Education General Meeting July 22 to order. At this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. And Ms. Parker, can we begin this evening with a roll call, please?
Chair Cobb.
Here.
Vice Chair Perezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
Sharon Warden.
Present.
Tommy Olden is not present.
Rodney Walton.
Here.
Valerie Boges.
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Parker. At this time, Ms. Warden, would you please read our ethics awareness statement?
Welcome to the July 22, 2024, meeting of the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Board of Education. It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina general statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board today? Let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you so much, Ms. Warden. At this time, I need a motion to approve our agenda.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agenda for July 20, 2020, 22, 2024. Excuse me. As presented.
Okay. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and second by Ms. Warden. Do we have any discussion? In lieu of a roll call vote this evening, our voting will be vote by show of hands. At this time, if you are in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand to show such. Ms. Parker, please reflect, we have a unanimous vote. At this time, this is the portion of our board meeting where we have public comment. And let me just share with you some of the directions for participation in public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present their comment. The public comment session will not exceed 30 minutes except by majority vote of the board. A sign up sheet is always available 30 minutes before the meeting begins for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. During the public comment period, the board chairperson will recognize speakers in the order in which they are signed in. When the person's name is called, please approach the podium without anything in hand except paper or an index card if needed. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with additional information in written form. The chairperson will preside over the public comment period. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. In case of emerg-- except for in case of emergencies, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. And disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143, 318, 17. This evening, we have one person signed up for a public comment, and that person is, and I don't know if I'm going to be able to pronounce it right, Mr. Branch. Yes, Mr. Branch, you may take the podium, please, and Ms. Parker will let you know when your three minutes begins.
Good evening. I really don't need the mic. But, oh, trust me, everybody gonna hear me, I speak loud enough. I chose to come and address the board today because there's a lot of things I don't understand, especially in the school system. And when it comes down to volunteer coaches, how do you choose your coaches and what is the remedy that you use to say no, that they're not fit? Now, I do understand that a criminal is a criminal. That I understand. But everyone with things on their records are not criminals. It just happened to be that time that things happened. And mainly, I'm speaking about myself. I've served over 36 years protecting this country and listening to everybody in here say the Pledge of Allegiance. Most people don't know what that means, but to me, I do. I can remember laying on a table, listening to doctors talk about my living or dying for this country. But when I come home, years later, and retire, years later, and set in, years later, to donate some of the things that I have learnt back to my community, I find that there's a problem. And I like to have clarification on that problem. I've been to the board about three, maybe four times. Never got a chance to speak to anyone I requested. But my application for volunteer trainer was denied. You never seen me. You might have seen a record, maybe, with a few things on it that don't add up. But that's not me. That's just something that happened to me in my life 20 years ago. I am a coach. I was a professional athlete. I spent my time in the Marine Corps, and the government allowed me to do everything that I just said with representation of this country. I've been to many countries for competition, coming back home where I think I got things going on, I see that I don't. Because people don't trust me or trust us like that. I've been coaching for over 30 years. Before the pandemic, I worked at every school in this county, going around volunteering and helping where they need help at. After the pandemic, you guys came out with this strict rule that changed everything. I even volunteered to be a bus driver. I had CDLs. Couldn't do that because of something that I have on my record. I think the government passed a bill sometime ago about second chance, and I don't see that being used here. We have good peoples out here in the community. But if you don't give them a chance to show you, my time is up. If you don't give them a chance to show you, you will never know.
Thank you so much, sir, for your comments. Mr. Branch was the only person that we had on our public comment portion this evening, so I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Parker for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone that's here again and our visitors that are joining us this night, tonight. A couple of things I'd like to share. One is each board member this evening received a copy of a book that has recently been published by Ed N.C. And for those that may not be familiar, Ed N.C. is a North Carolina-based news organization that their sole purpose is to share news and information on the public schools in North Carolina. And this book is called North Carolina's Choice: Why Our Public Schools Matter. And it's a collection of articles that illustrate really the profound impact that public schools have on communities across our state, particularly ours. And one that is a particular, has a particular resonance is Chapter 3, which talks about school, public schools as anchor institutions, and those institutions, one that really define the shape of a community and have a profound impact that's even hard to measure. So, wanted to mention that and to anyone that might be listening, this publication is available online at no cost. It can be downloaded. So I just wanted to highlight some of the really incredible things that are highlighted in that book that show a symbol of the things that we're doing here in Elizabeth City as well. A couple of highlights I'll share tonight. One is we've got several capital projects that are underway right now, and a couple I'll share would have a particular importance to some of our parents and students and teachers. I also want to thank Ms. Wilkins who's here tonight and the Maintenance Department for organizing a lot of work that's been going on the past couple of months, particularly this summer, as we have a lot of things going on at a lot of schools and a lot of places. So I appreciate that. One is we have right now at four schools, a complete repaving of the parking lot, and that's Northeastern High School, Pasquotank County, Northside Elementary, and Sheeparney Elementary. And I was able to drive by Northeastern today and see what is some really, really good things going on there. So several of our staff and students and families will see new parking lots when they come back to school. We have playground installations going on at all of the elementary schools, the exception of Pasquotank Elementary, and that will follow with a new pre-K compliant playground. So that will be happening, and so if you've driven by some of the elementary schools, you may have seen some of those playgrounds being installed. They will be ready by the time students return. Really excited about that. In a couple of weeks, we're anticipating that the installation of our new electronic digital marquee signs will start to take place at all of our schools, and so the public can begin seeing that here shortly. And we'll just continue on with several landscaping projects we have going, and several of our schools right now are being completely painted inside, and so students will be able to see some really fresh hallways at some schools when they return. So some exciting things there. We've got two camps that are underway and will be concluding. One is our summary to achieve camp, which will continue to the end of this month, and also our extended school year camp. And so to our educators, our administrators that are running those camps, I want to say thank you. I was joking with somebody the other day that we ended the 23, 24 school year on June 7, and then we opened school back up on June 11 for our summer programs, and they have continued through the duration of the summer. This is the first year where we've had some continuous programming all summer for our students, and so that's taken a big commitment from staff to be able to have those things ready, so I'm very thankful for that. And I also want to thank our child nutrition department. We do have some visitors here with us tonight from River City Youth that are going to come up in a minute and share our partnership on a camp that we had last week. But our child nutrition department has been feeding students daily in our summer programming and also been providing on Fridays boxed meals for the entire week. And when we get here in August, Ms. Reinhardt's going to come back to the board and share numbers of meals that we prepared at no cost this summer to the residents and children of Pasquotank County in some of these programs. So again, this is the first year we've ever expanded the summer feeding program this large and been able to provide no cost meals to any child in Pasquotank County. If they are a resident or a student of our school system or not, they've been eligible for this. So a really great thing there, and I'm thankful for that. The last part here is, parents can find our school supply list on our website. You can also find those at Walmart, Office Max, some of the local stores in town have copies of those, so those are available. And we're really excited about getting ready to welcome our students, staff, and families back to school, believe it or not. That is going to happen very soon. And we're excited about August 20, the Tuesday is our open house for our middle school families. August the 21 is our high school open house, and then August 22 is our elementary open house, and then we begin school on August the 26th. So we're really excited about the weeks that are ahead and some really neat things going on. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parker. Next on our agenda, we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening, including the minutes from the June 27 meeting, the rental report, and fundraisers. So I would need a motion for that, please. A motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza. And then we have a second by Dr. Williams. Do we have any discussion? Okay, if we could have a show of hands for a vote, please. Yes, show of hands. Okay, Ms. Parker, if you'll mark that as a unanimous vote, and we have approved the consent agenda. Now I will move on and revert back to Dr. Parker, who is going to talk about our special guests that we have with us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to invite Dr. Mackey and her team to the podium to share some information with us. But I want to thank River City Youth Build for joining us tonight and for being here with us. Dr. Felton and then Ms. Moore here as well. And I will make sort of a quick little highlight here. The board may recognize Ms. Moore, who is the mother of our newly elected Student Board of Education member, Erica Moore, who is our Northeastern Student Board member who was elected on the board last month. And so I know Ms. Moore is very proud of Erica and her as a rising senior. So thank you, Ms. Moore, for your support. But we've recently concluded a camp where we partnered with River City Youth Build and hosted this camp at Pasquotank County High School, and our child nutrition department provided meals for the camp. This is my first year working with the camp, and as Dr. Mackey's going to share, what an incredible, incredible, life-changing opportunity for our community and for the residents, and we have been so happy to partner with this. So, Dr. Mackey, thank you for joining us and for sharing these things and for being here with us tonight.
Good evening. Can you hear me? They say I talk very soft. But anyway, first I want to thank Dr. Parker and the Board of Education for allowing us to use the school. Pasquotank County High School was perfect for the camp this week, and everybody really enjoyed it. I think this is the second time that we have used Pasquotank County High School for the camp. And of course, River City Community Development Corporation has been sponsoring this camp since 1997. We, in 1997, we started to provide the home repairs through group cares, and we continued on an annual basis for quite a few years. Just before COVID, we had started doing the camp every other year. But now, we have agreed to do it next year, which should be the year after. But we had such a demand from our residents, and we did not get to complete some of the projects that we started. The group started in Loveland, Colorado in 1977, and it started as a result of a flood. They have volunteers to come in to restore communities, and from that, they started this volunteer initiative with young people. The camp that we sponsored was high school and junior high camps, and we had, which Michelle will talk about later, over 370 young people. And the camp, when these young people come in to our community, is just amazing because they come in with a spirit to serve. As hot as it was last week, I was telling Dr. Parker, you never heard one of those young people complain about the heat. It was us, you know? Oh, I don't know if we can make it. But they are just so resilient, and they are, they come to our community, they are excited, and they not only come to our community to do housing repairs, they brought blankets, towels, toothbrushes. They brought over 2,000 items for our homeless shelter and the food bank. And it was just amazing because they come in, they bring articles, and then every day during the week, they usually go to the stores here locally and buy more. So we have a really good start for our temporary homeless shelter that we're trying to bring online, and we have all kinds of goodies to take to the food bank. So I'm going to stop here, and I'm going to turn it over to Michelle.
Dr. Felton. I want to make one correction. The camp is really sponsored by River City Community Development Corporation. Youth Build is a program that we sponsor, but the major, the organization itself sponsors group. Thank you all so much.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Superintendent Parker, it is an honor to be here this evening, to stand before you and provide you some insight on the wonderful work that our young people provided. It's a labor of love, and as you watch these pictures as the PowerPoint goes forward, just think about the labor of love. What you see here is a document that was posted on each one of the houses. The way the application progressed began, the residents and the homeowners, because it was for homeowners, they completed their application. Back in April, they received a site visit. It was determined whether or not the work could be completed based on the tasks and the skills of the young people. If those people were selected, what you see here, those are the tools that were ordered for the sites, the 50 sites that were selected. We had a need for about 106 ladders. Many people in the community donated ladders, and they also brought ladders with them. So we had a total of about 160 ladders. Okay, we welcomed them, we wanted them to know that they were appreciated, and we appreciated their service. This is on Friday evening. We invited the families out, and this is what you see here. These are some of the young people in front of one of the homes that they were working on. Okay, this is just them. If you see the love symbol, this is a young man painting. These are just some of the tasks that they completed. You can see power washing the house, painting fences, as well as the previous screen they painted inside. Here you see someone repairing a porch. This is a porch repair as well. On the inside, you see, this is probably painting, and just kind of looking up. This is the after picture of a painting task. This is outside, and this is outside as well. And do you see the smiles as she said this? And now this one, the one before, you'll see the before picture, and just keep that image in your head. That was a skirting project, and I was told that it was an eyesore to the community, so we're really proud of that. This is a painting project, and prior to painting, they would scrape the old paint off. Same thing here, they're working on a house and the porch repair. Okay, you see a before and after. The after picture speaks volumes regarding the house, and if they needed to remove the ramp, that's what they would do. This is a before and after picture here as well, and I think you will agree, it's definitely a transformation. These are just some of our young people still smiling about. This is on Simpson Ditch. This is a wheelchair ramp. On Friday, many of the homeowners came out to spend time with their crew, and this is in Pecquemis. And this is, that's fine. And this is just another homeowner with her crew. This is in Camden, and this was actually on television. I hope you all saw that. We had a news crew, W- wavey 10. Okay. Okay. As you can see, they painted outside of this home as well. Oh, there's Dr. Parker. He went out on, he went out to visit some of the homes. Okay, and this is the other picture of the event on Friday night. Now, this is special. The homeowner sent me this picture, and she said, hey, they signed my porch. And she was so happy about that. And if you look, the first thing they said, "God is love." I thought that was, that was just heart touching. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm going to wrap this up with some impact, and as Dr. Mackey said, we've been doing this since 1997, and I have some stats from 2016, 2018. I don't know if you can see it, I'm just gonna, gonna read off. We had, at that point, in 2016, there were 41 homes repaired with 65 crews, a total of 395 volunteers, and they came from 11 states. I'm looking at these states here, I think Wisconsin is probably the farthest from where they came. And the bottom line economic impact was 200, over $281,000. And when you look at it in terms of the volunteer hours, the materials, the sponsorships, even they factored in the gifts that they brought for their homeowners. And in 2018, there were fewer, but still had a very good impact. Does that say 18? In 2018, there were 31 homes repaired with 48 crews, 272 participants. We had seven states, and the bottom line there was about $246,000. We don't have the final totals for this year's work camp. And you know, when I think about, when I look at the young people, they came from as far as Louisiana, Illinois, and Idaho were the farthest points, and there were 13 states there. These young people pay to be a part of this. It is a missions trip, a national missions trip, not so much an international one. But for our camp, you might ask, why? Why would 370 campers from 20 churches, 13 states, making up 64 crews? And we had an original total of 49 sites, and 46 of the priority repairs were done for a total of 11,100 hours, and they brought 2,332 community gifts. And you may ask, why? It doesn't supposed to make sense that they would come to Elizabeth City, our small town, but they wanted to make a huge impact on our community. And I like to say, it's not supposed to make sense. It's supposed to make faith. And we thank you so much for partnering with us, allowing us to be at the school. Champion sponsor was Centerra, Seven Sounds, of course, ECPPS, the Albemarle Area Realtors Association, and local churches and community residents also donated. So we couldn't do what we did without ECPPS. And we're going to do it again next year, right? Right? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for showing us how much of an impact it does actually make on our community. At this time, we are going to move into our unfinished business, and I am going to ask Ms. Haynes if she will come forward for us and just speak very briefly about what it is that we are looking at before we move to our new business.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and board members, good evening. So the first item in the unfinished business, or all the unfinished business actually, are the policies that were proposed at the last meeting. Haven't had time to read through the first read. Are there any questions on the policies that were submitted last month?
Okay, with that being said, since we have no questions, I need a motion to approve PC 01 through PC 18. Do I have a motion from the board?
I move to approve PC 01 through PC 18.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I heard Mr. Walton.
We always have a conflict.
Y'all are thinking alike tonight. So we had asked for any discussion there, any discussion at all on any of these policies, second read? If not, can we please see a show of hands to approve the motion? Okay, Ms. Parker, if you'll note, that was unanimous. And now we're going to move into new business. So Ms. Haynes, if you'll take us through that, please.
And the items on the new business, on the agenda for new business this evening? The first item is, well, actually, the first two items are contracts that we're asking the board to approve. The first one being for Debbie Stooks, who has been providing principal mentorship and coaching and support to our curriculum and instruction team. And the second one for Nicole and Company, who is providing support with communications. So are there any questions on the two contracts? And so moving forward then, the next item on the agenda is the Weeksville Elementary canopy quote. This was one of the projects in the 2024-2025 capital list. Are there any questions on the canopy quote? Okay, the next item is the school nutrition freezer bid. This is for the freezer behind the warehouse. And kind of like the painting, the third time was the charm on this. So we did bid it three times. And at the third time, we did get three responsive bidders. And you've got a copy of that bid tabulation in your packet. And we are requesting that the award be as indicated in the packet to Steve Stark and Associates. And then the final item is the sound system quote for the school gyms. And this would be for Pasquotank County High, Northeastern, and PW Moore.
Ms. Haynes, I do have one. It's not really a question, it's just a request for just a little bit more information. Can you just discuss the canopy at Weeksville just a little bit? So people that might not be aware of what it is will know.
Okay, I'll do my best, but I may have to refer to Ms. Wilkins for some details. So as you know, we did the canopy for Central Elementary to extend that walkway. So there's a covered walkway for students. This is going to provide a covered walkway area for the students coming from the main building to the exterior buildings that they use for the music and art, I believe.
Thank you. All right, so we now need to have a motion to approve the items under new business. Mr. Lottie, I am going to ask you one quick question with this. Do we need to do each one of these separately, or can we do them all as one motion to approve? Okay. Okay. Okay, so then we'll have a little bit of discussion there before we... Is there anyone that has any opposition to us doing them as a blanket motion?
Question was the funding source for these two contracts right here. We would not be using extra money to fund those two contracts. And so they'll be funded from our local funds.
All right, so I'll ask that question again. Are we okay to move forward with a blanket motion, or would we like to take them separately? Okay, all right, so I need a motion to approve the items under new business.
I make a motion to approve the items under new business, which includes contracts for Dr. Stooks, Nicole Jay, the Weeksville Elementary canopy quote, the freezer bid, and the sound systems for school gyms.
Okay, so we have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Walton seconded. And now can we see a show of hands for approval? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous, Ms. Parker. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. At this time, Dr. Williams, will you take us into closed session?
A motion for the board to go into closed session as allowed by NC General Statute 143 through 31811A6 for the purpose of considering one or more personnel matters that are confidential under NC General Statute 115C through 320, as allowed by NC Statute 143 through 31811A3, to consult with the board attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Boggs. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, can we have a show of hands, please, for approval? Okay, Ms. Parker, if you'll note, that was a unanimous approval. This is the end of our open session. We will now be adjourning to closed session. Thank you so much for coming.